Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anybody on the board who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding any of the items before us this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Let's see, I do not. Oh, actually, I take that back. I met, let's see, this is regarding the bid from GPI and it actually had nothing to do with the bid. I had lunch with somebody that they were hiring and she wanted to move to Pittsburgh, wanted to know about Pittsburgh. So, I met with her, told her about Pittsburgh. And I guess she was hired by them subsequently, but I just wanted to disclose that. Okay? Okay, so with that being said, would the clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification?
Okay, I'm going to limit it tonight to a few items. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also at general matters at the end of meetings. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through raise the hand feature. We are using Zoom tonight, so please raise your hand if you wish to speak. If you do not want to speak and you would like me to ask the question, please put it in the Q&amp;A. I don't look at the chat button. Thank you. And please provide your address and name as well. Let's see. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, inform dignity, and good taste. And, let's begin.
Okay. Before we start this evening, we have two trustees. This is your last public meeting as board members, so I would like to recognize trustee Renee Stetser and trustee Dan Keating's years of service to our community, serving on this board. We are grateful for your passion and your advocacy on behalf of our residents. And Dan, your advocacy for inclusion in our community and greater government transparency has been really important work, and I hope you will continue this advocacy as a resident. And Renee, your lifetime of work regarding walkable and bikeable communities and public safety is noteworthy. Your engagement with NISTOD, on many occasions, and that's the Department of Transportation of New York State, has helped us achieve many important goals for our active transportation plan. And it also is my hope that you continue to be a voice within our community, addressing these critical issues. And so, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, the Village Hall staff, and our DPW, we extend our very best wishes and our deep appreciation for your good work. And trustee Keating has asked to make a statement as well?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the kind words. This one's longer, sorry. It's my last chance to make a statement, and I'm gonna make it. What's that?
Phone was that?
Okay. To the villagers, trustees, and staff of Village Hall, it has been a pleasure serving you. One of the profound experiences of my life. It was everything I hoped it would be. Challenging, meaningful, engaging, uplifting, frustrating, invigorating, exhausting, thankless, and more. All of that, plus it didn't pay very well. But more than anything, the work mattered. Even from this small perch, from this small community, politics matters. At this moment of reflection and transition, it's the work that stands out. I'm enormously proud of the work. Here's a short list of the things that we accomplished in the last five years on this board. We rewrote and modernized the code. We removed old language from the code that could only be used to discriminate. We passed two budgets with no tax increases. We lifted a moratorium on new development. We modernized the budgeting process to incorporate spreadsheets and other technological advancements to foster collaboration and improve transparency. We reorganized the staff at Village Hall during a turbulent time and made difficult choices to put the right people in the right roles, so that they may best thrive for themselves and for you. We stayed out of court on 75 Monroe. Believe me, there are reasons to go to court. People who want to go to court, people who have a financial incentive to go to court, people who are very convincing that we should go to court. And we found a way to get tasks done without lawsuits. That is what the overwhelming majority of people told us they wanted from their representatives. And we did this with an eye toward getting the best possible results for the villagers, given what the judge has decided and what's allowed by our own laws. It's not easy work. We've moved the village boards onto Zoom, enabling safety for board members and broader access for the people to their representatives. We post those meetings on YouTube for all to see at any time. We promoted the training of more than 100 local families in Narcan use and facilitated the free delivery of this lifesaving medicine to members of our community. We recognized, supported, and spoke up when our black community members faced discrimination, overt racism, and racist structures in Pittsburgh and around the world. We publicly championed our LGBTQIA+ community members and told them they have a home here. We put up a Village Facebook page so that more people had more information about what is happening and what will happen with their government. When we met a particularly complex new issue out of legalized cannabis, we put it to a vote so that the villagers could directly express their desires, given such a sea change. We enhanced the streets, making them safer for pedestrians, bikes, pets, vehicles, and the emergency responders. We resisted every call for a new moratorium. We supported our businesses. Some that come to mind that had significant changes in the last five years were Lock 32, the Collins Pavilion, Simply Crepes, the Del Monte, Copperleaf, the Pittsburgh Pub, and more. We handled incredibly sensitive HR issues that could have really affected people's lives and did what we thought was right for all involved, given the facts that we had and the laws and policies in place. We were at our best, particularly when the solutions weren't easy. We tried all kinds of things to reduce the speeding in the village, including a speeding summit dedicated only to this topic and tracked the ideas that came out of it to make sure we executed. We embraced our neighbors at Pontillo's when the personal health of some of their staff became endangered. We put up stop signs on South and Sutherland and both seemed to help. We secured a significant grant to improve our beloved home place. I'm sure there's more. Notice that each of those bullets started with the word "we." These actions were not done by one person. They were done by several, and in many cases, by people who foundationally disagreed. But they still ultimately happened by majority. Some of these were under Bob, some of them were under Elisa, and that's important. It's one thing to do work when you have an easy majority, it's quite another when you're in the minority. And you may not agree with everything on this list. You may not see all of those as wins for the community. That's fine, we agree to disagree. And there are some misses, some things that we wanted to accomplish and didn't. Nobody is perfect. And there's also something else about that list that I want, that I just delivered. Every single one of those items faced significant opposition. Well, all but one. The one that we all agreed on is improvements for pedestrians. That didn't face board opposition. That doesn't mean it was easy, though. It has been incredibly hard, and the results are noticeable and impactful. Renee has been point on all of that, and with Elisa's support, and a hat tip to them. So that entire list, except for pedestrian safety, faced serious, aggressive, often belligerent pushback. Some of those headwinds were from a small segment of residents, and that's fine, that's their opinion. The job is to hear them and take whatever wisdom is in their ideas. But mostly, those items faced challenges from fellow board members. The ideal wasn't debated on its own merits, it was debated based on who raised it. And that was frustrating. But that's politics, I guess. I was naive to think that only happened at the state or national level. Clearly, it happens at the local level, too. Live and learn. But collectively, despite this, a majority of us pushed for those things and we made them happen, despite aggressive pushback, accusatory Facebook posts, and public scorn from a few loud voices. And that negativity is a shame. It's the downside of the job. Doesn't have to be that way, and I'm hopeful that people can cool out. The pendulum swings in democracy. I'm glad for that. I'm glad to have done this work and then hand it to someone else. It's time for another point of view to represent the people. With that in mind, I'll present a call to action for the next cohort of trustees. My challenge to the board is to do the work in a less destructive way. Your job is not to be the voice of resistance opposing what's before you because of who proposed it. You're the representatives of the people. Time to be constructive for the villagers and for all of the villagers, not just your friends. You represent all of us, including me and my family, and I wish you the best. I'd ask that the next board take a more, more of a collaborative approach of, how can I make this idea better, rather than to just shoot it down because your opponent suggested it? Lead with possibility, not fear. I'll give you an example from this week. It's one thing to sit back and write another accusatory Facebook post about the budget, one that points the finger. It's another to work through all the difficulties of a budget that solve as many problems for the people, and work together and build a coalition to pass it. We had both approaches represented on the board this week, yet again. Being a critic on Facebook is easy. Being someone who gets something done is hard. But the people voted us into office to get things done. You will need three votes to pass a budget. Time to compromise and produce, not just criticize. I'm sincere in wishing you all good luck. It's your budget, not mine, and Renee's. We helped with the first draft. It's yours to finish and pass. It will have your names on it, not ours. I'd like to include, and I'm almost done. I would like to include another apology for being overly aggressive at times. There were a handful of times I wasn't at my best during this run. That's my responsibility, and I'm sorry. The work was a grind, and it was often at the end of a long day. The trustees' meetings were unnecessarily long and stressful, and they still are. I'm a sensitive man. The personal attacks wear me down. I inherited a finely tuned bullshit meter from my father, and it often sounds the alarm in politics. I wasn't always healthy during my tenure, and I'm a single dad raising kids, juggling several jobs. And when all of these factors combined with fatigue and a feeling of being picked on, I can be loud. I apologize for that. I don't like myself in those moments either. So to Lilly, and Justin, Elisa, and Bob, I apologize for those moments, and to those who witnessed them as well. Let's end with some thank yous and well wishes. First, thank you, Dorothea. You are steady, you are a pro, and you have my respect. We've watched you grow in your professional abilities, and you have exceeded the already high expectations. Brooklyn is not here? Brooklyn's not here?
No.
Well, to Brooklyn, he's a dignified man with a bright future, and I wish the best for him, and I hope to stay in touch. Steve is also not here. Steve on the line?
He's not here.
He's not here. Steve, you approach your job with the goal of coming up with a solution that works within the rules, and you do that for anyone before you. I really admire your can-do attitude with an eye kept on doing what's allowed. Zach, you might have the hardest job of them all, and you keep it very steady. The DPW team you've developed give their best to our community, and it makes it safer, and it makes it shine. Jeff Turner, Jeff, buddy, you are my favorite lawyer I've ever worked with. Your counsel is thorough, fair, well-considered, easy to understand, and your heart is in the right place. So thank you all. To the next board, Elisa, Dave, Lisa, Lilly, and Justin, I wish you the best. Keep doing what's right for the people. You're here to represent them, to do their will. To those who stepped in and ran and contested elections, I thank you. That's Dave Ferris, Peggy Brazee, Bob Corby, Lisa Plover, Renee Stetser, Justin Lyken, Lisa Cove, Dave Marshall, and Jared Cook. Giving people a choice matters. I hope more will run for office in the future, do the work, then pass the baton to the next neighbor. Thank you to all that I served alongside. I learned from each of you, and you all did important work. That's Frank, Peggy, Bob, Lilly, Justin, Elisa, and Renee. Thank you. To Renee, thank you for your service, for your friendship, for your kindness and coaching. You're a real inspiration to our community, and we were all lucky to have you. A final thank you to Maggie, and Lila, and Hudders, and to Jen. Love you all. Thank you to Jesse as well. And last, thank you to the villagers for entrusting us to do great work together. And to the next group of trustees, please get to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay. Good, all right. First thing up, the village handicap chair.
Yes.
Yes. And do you want to fill us in, because this has been an ongoing concern, is the chair that's right up, you know, going down the stairwell for the access downstairs?
So, the village installed the handicap chair at the request of the American Legion. I want to say it's been about eight, nine years now. The chair initially worked great, we didn't have any issues. Actually, it's been very much use. Over the last year and a half...
Year and a half?
Two years. It's been a constant source of anxiety, frustration. We have spent countless dollars and time trying to get it repaired. It's come down to the chair needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, that's not a cheap cost. Originally, it was a grant, we received a grant for the chair, which was fabulous. But now it's time we have to pay for that. And it's gonna probably run us about $20,000. So what I'm gonna ask the board to do tonight is authorize me to go get three bids for the replacement of the chair. The difficult part of this is I'm gonna ask you, allow me to take the money from Fund Balance, because this is an unbudgeted item, and it is a necessity. And I have Legion members here to explain that necessity to you, to hopefully convince you alongside me.
And the chair isn't working now?
No, it is not working now, and I'd rather not spend $1,000 to have it repaired. I'd rather put that money into a new chair, so they can do what they need to do.
So we're sort of throwing the good money after the bad? Okay.
I didn't know there was a replacement chair. That's remarkable.
No, it will be if I can convince them.
There isn't, there isn't one yet, and we think that's why you're here, to help us understand why we should replace the chair. Yeah?
We went through a series of difficulties. It seemed to solve the problem for a while, and then, I don't know.
The last fix was last Friday. It actually, Mr. Hurtclot's got on the chair, it went not even 12 inches, and broke down.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the wrong chair, is what we're coming to. It can't handle, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'd point at myself, I can't think, it can't handle certain weight limits. And it just, and the age of it is crushing the metal, and there's fatigue on the track itself.
It's just outlived its use, it sounds like, too, you know?
I think it's just time.
Like, nine years in. Yeah, Lilly?
Yeah. I don't know if we need a motion. I assume that we do.
I, yes, you need a motion to expand the budget, to allow me to take from Fund Balance, to expend the money to get the new chair. Of course, I would get the bids and bring it to the board for approval to go ahead and purchase the chair.
That's, I'm asking for the procedure. I'm wondering if we need to make a resolution, a motion to send it out to bid, or whether that is an automatic?
I think both.
Okay.
I would ask for both.
Yeah, do both in the motion. Okay, yeah. So I will make a motion to direct the village clerk to send out to bid RFQs for the replacement of the handicap access chair.
And to expand the budget?
And to expand the budget.
To use that?
For, to allow for the procurement of a replacement chair.
I'll second. Okay, we have a second roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
You're on your way to getting a new chair.
That's phenomenal. I thought it was just plain, just being in bad shape, and that's it. I just, this is wonderful.
Merry Christmas.
No, it has to happen.
And thanks for coming. Thank you for coming in, too. We appreciate it. Okay.
Mayor, in that same thing, I fell downstairs on three steps, I don't know, a couple months ago now.
Right.
Split my elbow and all that, because there's no handrail on those steps.
Oh, well, that's something we should look at. Oh, the other three, okay, let's look into that. You know what, we'll have Steve take a look at that, and he can maybe make a recommendation on there.
Correct, we can have it looked at. I know in the past it was looked at. The problem, I think, is with the floor, and it very well might be that there's some asbestos in that floor.
Oh, yeah, they don't want to...
But we can take a look at it, and it might require some asbestos testing, and something we can do.
Okay, let's revisit that. Thanks for bringing that up, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Justin, sure.
Just wanted to say thank you for coming in, and thank you for your patience with some of the outdated equipment there. I did go down for one of the breakfasts the other day and spoke with Al, and we were having troubles with the chair then, so I know it's been an issue, and...
It's frustrating.
Appreciate you sticking with us and your patience in getting results.
As for some of those stairs are a very great challenge.
Yeah, we understand. And you're our favorite neighbors. Okay, thanks again. All righty, we're going on to agenda item number two. This is the special permit application for Cycle Cafe.
Would it be okay if I use this podium?
Oh, we should have pulled, we should have pulled it out, actually. Whoops, careful.
It's just a great night.
Don't get to take care of it, Tommy.
Maybe we can push it back a little. Thank you.
So I'm gonna be fairly brief, but...
Excuse me, name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. So my name is Chuck Mancini, M-A-N-C-I-N-I. My address is 30 Ford's Crossing, Honeyway Falls, New York, 104472. And I am representing a company that I own called Ribandell Cycling, and Ribandell Cycling LLC. And I'm seeking a special permit application from this board. The application is to open up a cycling cafe at the building at 5 State Street, which many of you will recall was once a Starbucks for many years, until moved down to the library. And most recently, it has been Rachel's Mediterranean Grill. Is there any other information I need, Dorothea, to provide?
You're on a roll now.
So today, I'm gonna have some brief remarks, and then I've asked a land state architect that's assisting me on this project, Ryan Kelly, to present a few renderings to the board. Our plan is gonna require approvals from planning and zoning, from historic preservation, and from the full village board, which we understand can only come after a public hearing. So tonight, we're gonna present you with information and request that you schedule that public hearing sometime next month, one of your two meetings next month, and formally consider our application for approval. We understand that some of this is contingent on planning and zoning. They meet, of course, on April 5th, and we're hoping that we'll receive their approval, but we'll see. We did meet with planning and zoning earlier this month, on March 1st, to present our concept. We also met with historic preservation this past Monday. Both boards provided some valuable input, and in fact, Ryan will share some of the modifications to our plan that are resulting from the input from historic preservation. We provided background information for today's meeting. I've got hard copies, if anybody would like one. They're PDFs provided. If any of our, anybody present from public wants one, they're welcome to grab one.
Excuse me, but we have, we have those copies in our packet. Thank you.
And we also have, and I'll just set these here in case anybody wants them...
Hand them to the clerk, please.
Yes, we have renderings that will be presented by Ryan, if somebody wants a larger version. So, the cycling cafe would be opened under license from La Fabrika Cycling Cafe in Girona, Spain. All of the background is provided in the background materials. The one thing I want to highlight is the license agreement does have a requirement that the cafe be located in a suitable location, accessible to cyclists, with a historic feel, and an outdoor courtyard terrace or patio seating area. The building at 5 State Street is a historic village, so it meets some aspects of the license agreement, but it does not have a courtyard or terrace seating area. So, our proposal and request for approval from the various boards of the village is that we convert the five-space parking lot into a historic courtyard, a historic cobblestone courtyard with a historic feel. We believe this is very consistent with the 2019 comprehensive plan. It's gonna transform what is pretty much an eyesore parking lot into a beautiful historic courtyard that's accessible to everyone in the village. It's gonna enrich, we believe, neighborhood life in the village. And because it's a cycling cafe, which I know, Renee, that you are a champion of, it's gonna promote cycling. And we really believe that it will have a significant impact on cycling, and I'll just get into that in just a minute. We all know that it's a highly sustainable form of transportation, and I think a highly recognized cycling cafe in the middle of the village is gonna be fantastic. So, our requirements that I asked the architecture team to work with, the courtyard had to have historic character. It had to create old-world character and charm, and in order to do that, I asked for cobblestones. I also asked that because we are in a winter climate here, we have a harsh winter, that it be radiant heated. So the cobblestones would be radiant heated. They do this in ski resorts out west, so that when it snows, the snow melts immediately upon hitting the heated cobbles. So shuffling the cobbles is not gonna be necessary, and the courtyard can be used throughout the year. I asked them that they try to replicate the atmosphere of La Fabrika Girona, which means it must be inviting, it must have some intimacy, and it must include greenery. The owners of La Fabrika are very passionate about including greenery. And in fact, one of the license agreements, one of the license terms that I have to agree to is to include fresh flowers inside the cafe on weekly basis. So, they're passionate about the green aspects of the cafe, which I'm happy to support. The design had to fit seamlessly in and respect the historic character of the village. I asked that the courtyard be sufficiently large to accommodate 34 or more customers at outdoor tables. One of those would be communal, others for two or four people. This is absolutely key. As you know, this is a small building. You also know that village rents, taxes, labor are not, are significant, and so we need the revenue from those outdoor tables. And then finally, I requested three things that are cycling related. First, I asked for an area for secure parking of bicycles, and I asked for a bike wash area where somebody coming in with a dusty, muddy bike could hose it off in a secure area. And finally, I asked for a fountain to refill water bottles with historic character. And so the team has come up with a design. There are eight tests to the special permit. We provided answers to all those, but I'd like to just briefly address two areas that might not be as self-evident from the answers and the materials that are provided. One is our operating model and expectations for seating, and the second is parking. So first, our operating model. We would operate on five days a week, from 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. On Sundays, we would open at noon and close at 4:00. And on Tuesdays, we will be closed. So this is a 7:00 to 3:00 most days of the week. In terms of employees, I'm expecting, I'm gonna be an owner-operator. That was actually one of the reasons I was able to secure the ability to be licensed. And as an owner-operator, I'll be there most days of the week. We'll have four employees on most days. On busy days, we'll have two more, so there'll be six, six others. The target market, of course, is cyclists. And I just wanna make a mention of the kind of cafe we're gonna be. Cafes typically target three types of people. One is people that want grab-and-go. They wanna get a paper cup with coffee, they want food to go, breakfast sandwich, and they wanna grab-and-go. The second type is remote workers. The people that pull up into a parking space, leave their car there for most of the day, they go into a coffee shop, they order a coffee, they open their laptop, and they sit there for hours on end, tapping away on their keyboards, sipping their coffee, and using a parking.
I'm gonna just remind you of the time.
Yes. And the third is the social and meditative person. Yes. And the third is the social and meditative person. They must come, fellowship, and think. That is us. We're not the first two. In fact, we're not gonna offer Wi-Fi. We're gonna discourage remote workers, and I just brought a sample. We're not gonna be doing paper cups. We're gonna actually do, we're actually gonna have custom mugs for every different type of coffee. This is a flat white mug, custom-made in Europe, and we're gonna be importing those, the crockery, because we want an experience. We want a historic experience. So that's what we're going about. In terms of parking, our primary customers are cyclists. Cyclists will park at the cafe. In terms of our employees, we're gonna discourage them from driving to the cafe if they can cycle. That's what we're gonna promote. We're gonna tell them they can't park in the village lot across the street. They can find parking a few blocks away, or we're gonna find arrangements with other parties. So that's the background on what we're doing. Hopefully, the background information was helpful. And then Ryan, could you just briefly go through the courtyard for the board?
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Ryan Kelly, RPK Land State Architecture, for the record. I'll be brief. It's really our design team is extremely diligent on creating alignment with the overall comprehensive plan, DOT, I'm sorry, the transportation plan, and making this outdoor seating area bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly. We've made substantial improvements to accessibility. And really, our big challenge was creating a private experience inside the courtyard, but at the same time, try to make this public-facing. So the two things I'd like to point out were, we've added some walls to make the internal bones of the courtyard feel private, and we've opened up the northeast corner with tiered seating that you see in the bottom right to really kind of add that public-facing piece for the customers and also social impact.
Thank you.
And just to kind of recap what we did discuss with the press board, some renderings talked about here. We had some feedback on wall heights, pillar heights, so we will be making some modifications over the course of the next week for gearing up for the 405 plan work. Heights on walls will reduce to neighboring views, and floors in the front are trivial overviews, but we feel this was pretty well thought out and inviting to community and customers. That's all for me. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions? Any comments from people? I'd set the board right now, and then we'll reach out. Yeah, Julie?
Thank you. Thank you. It's the second time I was able to hear your presentation, and I was also present at the HBB presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and what I'm using for reference is the village's guide to special use permits, because that's the criteria by which we will be looking at your application. One of the questions I have, and in no particular order, that we would want addressed when you do come for a public hearing, is trash. How that will be accommodated on your property, what your plan is for that, that would be one. Number two is handicap access. I couldn't tell from your rendering whether this was indicated as your handicap, which is beyond offense, and how that individual will then access your property or inside the cafe. If it is indeed ADB compliant, we would be looking at that as well. Do I understand that what we're looking at here is an instrument survey?
Oh, it's correct.
Okay. So the property lines have all been honored, and those are all correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And would you like me to briefly give two quick answers to your first questions?
You may, or you may have them prepared for the public hearing.
I would see you could answer now and also the public hearing.
All right. So the first one was, was it the...
The trash.
The trash. So there's a current easement agreement with the Village Bakery next door, and there is a shared trash bin. It's not accurate, if I might say.
Excuse me one second. Excuse me one second. Hang on. I need to recognize you.
Sorry.
Okay. So I'll recognize you in a minute. If you could just proceed and answer the questions for trustee, the other question, and then we'll recognize you. Thanks, Charlie.
Okay. So the first is the easement with the Village Bakery. The second item was handicap access. There is a shared handicap space with the Village Bakery. And then you will notice on the renderings that we've also provided handicap access for from the front of the building, there is a...
Yeah. Okay. You see it?
I see that. But it doesn't, it doesn't, I'm not clear where that person would park in order to access the handicap ramp.
Right. So it would be on the side of the building.
In other words, it's up here. I'm looking at it correctly?
Yes, so they would have to come down the sidewalk.
They would have to come down the sidewalk and around.
And then around the front. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, yes.
Hi, Charlie Fitzsimmons. I own the Village Bakery next door. Jojo down the street. I live in Pittsburgh. Just to comment on a couple of the items that Mr. Mancini is referencing. The, there is no permanent easement. There's an old deed that has some shared services. It's old. Part of those shared services was that I would have access to use the handicap spot in the parking lot, same handicap spot that's in there. For that, they could have access to my garbage. And there's still a water line that's shared. Water line goes in, which we're getting our new water line right now, so we can split the services better. With him getting completely rid of that parking spot, in my opinion, and legal counsel I've spoken to says they're already violating the deed agreement. And by the way, the designated handicap spot on his drawing is on my property. That's my property. It's not a spot. It's not his handicap spot. Secondly, that isn't a public path from the sidewalk up to my bakery, is when we put it, for our guests. It's not a public path. So there is no garbage, and there will be no garbage. If he violates the deed restrictions, paves over or patios over the handicap spot, it's a nonstarter. So, and that's really kind of what I wanted to share was, I think it's really cool. I like the big glossy pictures. I worked with Hamlin. They've done them for all my restaurants. I just don't think it is right to be able to give this particular proposal variances that we had to as a bakery.
I understand this evening that this is not about any of that, that it is really, there's a special use permit application before us, and the outcome would be to set a date to take it to public hearing to discuss this. So none of those issues at that level of detail would be addressed this evening. You know, so we appreciate everybody's comments. We're glad people want to weigh in on this. But at a public hearing, you know, that's really when we, there's additional vetting from members of our community as well.
Okay. I just wanted, being here, I wanna make sure that drawing was accurate and you understood. You know, there's some inaccuracies on the proposal.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Charlie. Yes, yes, Laura.
Yes, thank you. I understand very well, having done this for a while, that it can be very confusing navigating three separate boards when you are trying to open a business. It gets confusing as to which board is doing what, who is responsible, and what you need to present to that board for their consideration. Having said that, I am trying to convey to you as much as possible the information specific to this board that we would want to have so that we may move your process along in a timely manner and not get bogged down with coming to a meeting and then not having the information that we're looking for. So to that end, given what we have just heard, you may want to have for us an instrument survey that has been agreed upon by the property owners. So because we will not get involved with any line disputes, any property disputes, everything has to be clear-cut for us in order to make a decision. If there's any gray areas or any question, we, at least I will not be able to make a decision, because that has to be taken care of first. So that, the trash, the handicap access, the parking. You've covered the hours of operation. I don't see here, however, are there seats inside the cafe?
There are. There will be seating for approximately 40 inside the cafe. Just like outside, there will be a communal table for 10 people. There'll be a series of tables for four and two people, and then we'll have two banquet areas where they try to, two banquet areas in with a total of six between bench seating and chair seating. So there will be approximately three.
But we're only seeing the seating on the outside.
That's correct.
We're not seeing any seating?
We haven't presented that, but if this board needs to see that, we will have it.
We do.
We will have it for the next meeting. We need a floor plan.
Yeah, a floor plan is basically really what we need. You're right. A floor plan.
Yes. And we would also need more specific information regarding where your employees will be parking, what plan you have in place. Sometimes business owners have gone to other businesses in the village that have maybe different hours than you do, and come to an agreement to find places for their employees to park. I'll think of other things, but I just wanted to make sure that I got those covered. Thank you.
Fantastic. One of the things that's very helpful is, I'm gonna be the seat of the building, but the building owner, Mike Reynolds, is here, and Mike has a different opinion than Charlie, but we'll let them sort it out.
Yeah, exactly right. It's not for us to sort out at all. Excuse me one second here. Yes, Justin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mancini, for the presentation, and I enjoyed reading through the narrative that you provided about the property as well. I think in terms of understanding the different parts of the process and providing us with the narrative, I think that your application is one of the top that I've seen come through the boards, so it's very helpful and it looks like a great idea. That said, I do have some of the concerns that trustee Lanier was also raising, and especially in terms of the, I have one more question about the property line, based on the image and based on the county aerial imagery that I was looking at as well, the parking and the trash management. So first of all, the property line, it looks like there, both in the instrument survey that you provided, as well as the aerial imagery, it seems like there's a part of the area to be developed that's actually municipal property, just going north of the boundary line there, and I wondered if there was a specific...
I looked into this.
Yeah, I asked Jeff to look into this.
I can't find it, but what do you, I mean, I mean...
Yeah, you found municipal, because we're really trying to...
Yeah, I'm looking at this dotted line right here. Let me change the... I've got the aerial up as well, but this dotted line right here, it seems like some of the, just a fraction of this on that side of the sidewalk is, it seems like this is changing, but it could be village property, and it might be easier to see on the aerial.
That's that line that we...
We have not, we've not been able to find anything. I've looked. But I've not had any deed references either, so if there are deed references that would point it in that direction, I think I know the survey you're looking at. And I'm not sure that dotted line clearly denotes village property. I just don't know.
Yeah.
I don't have any...
We've been trying to investigate that.
...education of that. So, you know, a really valid survey of this property would help.
I mean, we have it, it's in the property boundary. We've had a professional surveyor.
Okay, thanks. One second. I just wanna say, that line that you're looking at, it also cuts off a corner of Phoenix, and it's, and we, you know, it goes all the way here.
The Phoenix deed. And the Phoenix deed goes right to the State Street.
Yeah.
Goes right to State Street, and goes right to Main Street.
So that line, I don't...
So that corner, if there is anything there, it's a mystery because it's not in the Phoenix deed.
Okay. Once again, pre-existing, non-conforming, our mantra.
But if we could find some deed reference that would demonstrate there's something there, then that would be...
Did you, any questions down here from the board at this point? No?
I had a couple of others.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Is there somebody who wanted to speak?
Yeah, one second, because I know, Chris Doblin, you wanted to speak. Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, name and address, please.
My name is, I live in 23 Washington Avenue. I'm here in Pittsburgh. I'm the owner of a co-council on Main Street, and I just wanted to let you know, as a village resident and as a business owner on Main Street, I think it's a terrific plan. I think, you know, it's definitely true. I have this family in Pittsburgh. I understand there could be some conflicts and interest there. I think it's a terrific plan. I think it's gonna make connections for our little village to all over the place, including around Western New York, Finger Lakes, the Bison Community, which is huge in Western New York. We could eventually have races beginning and starting here. We could have news coverage that would be coming here. We're gonna have a charming spot. We're gonna have a liaison with European Town, which I think would be suggested with all kinds of wonderful things about our village. I think it's gonna bring more people to Main Street and to my shops, which I present to you. And I think it's a great place for us to, my family to walk to. And we walk over there a lot now, going to the bakery. And I've spoken with Chuck, a lot of others planned, and asked some points of questions about whether it had some holes. I think this is a terrific addition to our community. I think that having this gentleman and this plan here is really, I can't imagine having really a better one. And I've seen what goes on in buildings being left open for a very long time around here and all over the country, and to have someone willing to bring in this money, bring in this investment with this passion, this potential stylish place to get out of here, this is gonna be wonderful.
Thank you. I just wanna say again, this isn't a public hearing this evening. This is really a special use permit that's before us. You certainly could have the opportunity to comment when we do have a public hearing.
I understand.
And I appreciate your input. I do. But we're really trying to address, you know, what's here before us this evening. And then, let's see, it was Mr. Reynolds wanted to speak?
Yeah, Mike Reynolds from 5 State Street Holdings. I represent and manage the property on behalf of the owners. I just have some background information about the history of the property, why it was divided, why it has two visiting addresses, and some of that, so I could...
If it's germane, but... If it's relevant, you could provide it to the board, you know, both of you, you know, whatever you all have. But anything that's in dispute, again, we said earlier, needs to be sorted out between the two parties. We're not in that business. We're in the business of taking a look at a special use permit application and setting a public hearing. Yeah, and just so Bob, you understand, I'm calling on people in the order of which they had raised their hands, and now I'm recognizing you.
Oh, thank you. Robert Corbison in Washington Avenue. I just wanted to give you some history on why the boundaries are the way they are. If you look at this photograph, when the village used to have a village green, there was a leg of State Street that cut in front of the Phoenix Building. That's where the line is. That's where the line is, remains today. It may not appear in the deed for the Phoenix Building because the edge of State Street was right there when the deed for the Phoenix Building was created. And if you, I believe when the Starbucks application came in in 1997, they did a survey. They showed the boundary then. Also, you could look at the reconstruction drawings for the four corners, which were surveyed, and that would have the boundary of the municipal right-of-way limits.
And I think also, when it was State Street way back, there was a horse-watering trough and fountain there in front of the Phoenix Building. And actually, part of it is in the basement of the Phoenix Building. Okay, yes.
So I actually had a couple of other things in addition to the property line there, and learned some interesting history along the way, so thank you. I agree with many of the comments here, and I think that personally, this is a very attractive idea that's aligned with many of the ideas in the comp plan. Mr. Mancini, as you pointed out as well, I think there's a lot of the comp plan, our active transportation plan, and a lot of things that villagers care about. That said, we really have to pay close attention to the laws as well, and I also am a little bit hesitant to get into a situation where everyone, like us, is, you know, like the people who've heard tonight say, "This is a great idea," but there are some parts of the code that don't work with it. And I'd like to make sure that we have things like parking issues resolved before we actually send it to a public hearing, because I think that's something fundamental that's in our code that we should address before it's actually brought to the public for ideas about the concept. So I, and specifically in terms of our code, it seems that we're, we have very, we do have some stringent requirements about parking, and specifically along the lines of the special use permit, it says that it can't fail to provide adequate parking to support the proposed use without causing a parking shortage or other problems for nearby businesses and or residents. And I think that there's... And I think that there's, that's something that might even go beyond some of the area variance requirements when it goes in front of the planning board. And I'm guessing we're talking about a variance being required, an area variance for the parking in this case. And so I want to make sure that we're not, you know, when the, when the, when the planning board is looking at that issue, they're looking at the impacts on the community and, you know, they've got a checklist of things to look at. But I think that the special use permit actually goes beyond that, specifically talks about the impact on the neighbors due to the intensity of the use. So I'm wondering if we can address that issue and also the issue of the trash management. It seems like this is something that is a legal issue and in agreement with other people sharing the usage of the trash facilities. And specifically, my proposal here would be that, you know, I'm concerned that we're bringing this in front of the public, everybody's excited about this, but there's something with our code that just doesn't work out in terms of the requirements of the special use permit. So my proposal would be that the board asks our attorney to look at the agreement that is reached and the terms of the deed that are brought in front of us to make sure that issue is resolved before we look at the other discretionary items required by the special use permit to bring it to a public hearing.
Do you have any...
No, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that. People get me this stuff, we can do it before, you know, a public hearing. I think the variance parking issue is a little trickier because they're going, I mean, the, in the variance work, the ZBA is already been looking at nearly the same issues this board will look at in the context of the special permit. And I don't think, well, again, I haven't done, I haven't done the research, but my conclusion would be that the Board of Trustees could not, in the special permit review, overrule the variance work of the ZBA, because that would be us tacting an appellate authority over them.
Right.
And I don't think that's appropriate or legal. So I understand the thought of maybe the special permit's broader, but really, in the variance work, the ZBA should be looking at much those same issues.
When are they going before the ZBA?
The fifth, I think.
What, April line? April line, okay.
Yeah, I would agree that if the variance is granted, then there's not a whole lot for us to say about the parking.
Yeah, that's what, that was, I thought about this when I saw it coming. And I think that's the conclusion.
I mean, I'm thinking of it in terms of the sequencing of things, you know?
I mean, I think that the April, it's April 5th or April 1st?
Ninth? Fifth, sorry.
April 5th meeting will resolve whether or not there's going to be a variance. And you could schedule a public hearing, and if the variance does not occur, you'd either adjourn the public hearing or cancel the public hearing. It's up to the board, it's entirely up to the board, but that kind of sequencing we've done in the past for other projects.
Right.
We've lined up a public hearing and the thought that the precondition would happen or not happen.
Okay, so, oh, I just have one question.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, I was going to ask about the dates too, in terms of the sequence of things. Here's my question. That once a public hearing is opened, then the clock is ticking?
Who?
As far as making a decision?
On whom?
On a special use permit?
No.
How long of a window of time is this on?
There is not a window of time. If this board fails to make a decision, the applicant would have a mandamus proceeding available to it. In other words, if you're not making a decision in a timely fashion, they have the right to go to court and say, make a decision.
I'd like to avoid that.
It's with subdivision, it's not an admissible.
So, but let's start, what would a date be then for a public hearing? Just so we're starting to, if there's a sequence here that...
Looking at the calendar, the first available date that this could go to public hearing is April 13th. We have our second meeting of the month, it would be April 27th.
Or April, okay, one of those two, and then...
The 13th aligns with after the planning, we would have that information of what happened well before.
And then it is, again, speaking of sequencing only, totally not my decision. It puts it ahead of the HPB meeting in April, which the HPB cannot make any decisions until everyone else makes a decision.
HPB comes in at the end, end of it all, basically.
Right, but they've been in front of the HPB for information.
Information, yeah.
So that they wouldn't get to the end and the HPB say, no.
Right, okay, okay. So, you know, the understanding here is, even if we set a date for a public hearing, you don't get a variance on the, on the 5th, then we would not hold the hearing.
Right.
Yeah, so sort of no harm, no foul, depending on the outcome from another board.
You're going to say it.
Remember? Because we have the budget conflict.
Trustee Lanier is going to be gone for the 27th.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, okay.
So we could go for the 13th. We have the time, we have time to post it and get it taken care of.
Yeah, okay. Justin, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to reiterate that I believe this should be conditional upon the acceptance by our attorney of the agreement regarding the trash management.
Well, I'm also interested in, I mean, if I were the board, I'd be interested in, you know, where, what is their property line?
Yes, and review the property line.
That should be in the motion, whoever wants to make one. She said, looking down the table.
Well, you know, I'm not sure the two are conjoined.
I know, but we have, we need to have that information.
No, no, but you could, right.
What are you thinking?
I'm saying if the board's not pretty close to set the public hearing how?
Yeah.
They could do two motions, or they could make the same motions, you know?
Yeah.
We have a deadline date, we can give them a faithful sum to have materials to us for review. Would that be enough time for you to look at?
I would, I mean, I would, I think there's going to be some back and forth with their attorneys on stuff soon, I mean, it...
If we're to do the hearing on the 13th, that's a long time.
Right, but I think the sooner they can put me in touch with their attorneys with surveys and so on and so forth, the board has these questions, I will answer them.
And the other thing that we can do is look at the, have everyone follow up with our attorney and consider this matter to schedule the public hearing at first meeting in April. To make sure that these are in place.
There aren't more ones to do.
I thought that's one of the possibilities we already discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I would prefer that, since it's, it seems like there are a few moving pieces here, I'd like to get those taken care of before we move it to a public hearing.
So don't even set the date?
I would not set the date, I would just, for our attorney to follow up as appropriate.
We might be in a better position on the 13th to set the date, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
I mean, again, totally your call, but I think we can answer that question between now and the 13th.
Yeah, I think...
Have the information available on the 13th, and if the board is not satisfied with the answers and the information, just like when you're ever not satisfied with information produced for a special permit, you either adjourn it or deny the special permit, or whatever it is that you want to do on the 13th.
Yeah, even if we set the date and we don't have all the information, we don't, we adjourn it, we don't have that hearing.
But?
But if everything lines up and the information's provided, we can move ahead.
You can do it both ways, whatever you want.
I mean, what are the other ones?
Yeah, I think the, to me at least, the danger with scheduling the public hearing is that then we carry through the public hearing, and we get a lot of people, like our, like many of ourselves, who are very excited about the concept, but there might be something legally that doesn't work, and it's tough to untangle those at times, and I would just rather solve it.
We would have the information prior to the hearing and then, and then cancel the hearing. Am I correct?
Or adjourn the hearing.
I'm sorry, adjourn the hearing. I, you know, so I think, and that would be probably noticed as well, you know? Yes, Chuck?
So I very much appreciate this debate. My, my position would be that let's try to resolve this with Jeff and the building lawyers and the Simmons lawyers. And if the zoning has concerns on the 5th of April and they don't approve, and by the 5th of April, there hasn't been a resolution of these two things, I can assure you, I will ask that the public hearing be adjourned and postponed until these things can be resolved. Because I'm not, I mean, I have no interest in a public hearing unless the matters that are of concern haven't been completely buttoned up and the planning and zoning board hasn't been, hasn't viewed our application fairly typically. So my request would be that we pencil in the 13th, and by April 5th, if everything's not in place, we'll pull.
I'll pull.
You don't have to pull. I'll pull it. Because I do not want to go to a public hearing unless these things have been buttoned up.
I mean, I would think that everybody present here this evening is in agreement that we need to resolve these outstanding matters. I think, you know, so we're starting from that point. And I think now really what's back to the board is whether or not we do set the date for the hearing. You know, my thought is if we set the date and, as you say, on the 5th, things don't work out, we simply, the hearing is adjourned, period. You know, we don't have the information, things are not resolved, why would, why would anybody want to move forward at that point? You know, it's just simply as a practical matter, you know?
I hear you, and my experience with special use permits has pushed me to ask to err on the side of caution because of the appearance that the board has to endure of being difficult to work with, because things are, have come before us, before, and for other boards, we call, not a complete application. And we really need a very complete application prior to be opening the public hearing, otherwise it just makes us look as if we're being difficult. So I would like it to go as smoothly as possible, and to that end, I would like to have all the assurances that every detail has been addressed, that is a concern for the, for the village. So, that's what I say.
That would be acceptable to me. If we, if we wanted to have another information-only meeting on the 13th, review where we are, and if the board is supportive at that point in time, then we schedule the hearing for the 27th. I mean, that's perfectly acceptable to me.
No, thank you, thank you for being flexible on that, because, you know, we're hearing, you know, the comments, Renee or Dan, anything you want to weigh in on?
It's acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's fair, you know, let's, dotted i's, crossed t's.
I appreciate that as well. So if we have the meeting, I'm certainly happy to hear it on the agenda on the 13th as well. And that would give us enough time to notice for the end of the month meeting.
Yes, the board made the wise decision. I still have a lot, we only have five days. I do have a question from Peggy Carver, maybe one South Street. I tried to answer it, but I don't know the total answers. She's questioning what variances they need with the zoning board. I know one is parking, I don't know what the other two are. Do we know?
Certainly the key one is parking. May be a pre-existing, non-conforming lot if they're not expanding the use, but they still have to get the variance. I don't know what the third would be, because I don't really, I haven't been involved in that at all.
I know Megan was advertising it.
I can speak to that.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, and this may be helpful to the special use permit. We've applied for four variances, fence heights, both grade and parking. We've applied for variance for lock coverage, and we've applied for variance for, for the parking. So R10 was, you have special use for specifically for outdoor seating. I'll verify your question, Justin.
Thank you.
The special permit is for everything. It's not just for the outdoor. See, I just want to make sure the applicant understood that, that the special permit covers the whole use.
That's why we need the floor plan as well. You know, we need to see in entirety what is happening on that side, yeah.
And one thing I want to make sure the applicant understands is that the HPB does not meet again until May something.
All right, but I mean, I think we've kind of, you know, had a good discussion, and I appreciate the flexibility and, you know, the good thoughts from, from the trustees here as well. So going forward, then it looks like we've got some homework to do. Everybody has homework assignments at this point. We, we can put you on the agenda for the 13th and bring it right back to the board and see how we will, you know, move forward or not. How's that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Don't forget your cup.
Oh, yeah, so we've got a slide here. A little oopsie doo, one of the...
Okay. Okay, thanks, everybody, Mike Reynolds.
Is that the different Mike Reynolds?
It's his son.
Oh, it's his son, yeah? Oh, my God.
I know, yeah, he's all grown up, I know, he's all grown up. Okay. Okay. Next up on the agenda is a non-municipal permit application for Pittsford Food Tours. Yes?
I'm representing Sherry Davenport again. Ms. Davenport's been in front of the boards before. Nothing's too really changed with her application. We've approved this the last couple of years. Really stipulation, again, she has asked is the insurance depending on if she can open or not open. I'm likely to think we're okay, and she'll be able to move forward this year. She was able to move forward the last couple of years. So that's pretty much it. Is there any questions? And I do realize that the application is in a photo...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and I asked her to submit the original to totally have no contract.
I kind of like the job from her.
Okay, and there's no waiver needed, because it's not, it's pretty far out. Okay, all righty. Any, any questions or any comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
I'll make a motion that we approve the non-municipal, the non-municipal use permit for Pittsford Food Tours. I don't have the day, I don't have anything in front of me. For June, as presented.
May, February, November of 2023.
Thank you. With the same conditions as previously approved.
I'll second. You've got it ready.
Wow, it's a tie, I don't know. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, is Scott Harter on the line here?
He is.
We have Scott.
Unless I lost him at some point along the line.
Unless we lost him at some point, I know. Okay, next up are the bid results. We have these in the packet and they're posted. The first one is for South Wood and Sutherland Street Engineering. And Zach, thanks for staying and, you know, helping us with this as well. Scott, are you, are you coming?
He's transitioning.
He's transitioning, okay. will be sort of airdropped, taken care of, and they'll clean everything up. And they just need the extra space. I think it's really what they're looking for. I don't know if there's anything else to add. I mean, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what they'd like to do. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-municipal use. Is it amendment we're saying? We're amending the first?
Just, what did we say?
It's a new.
It's a new, okay, it's a new.
It's just modified slightly.
Oh, modify.
The request is modified slightly.
Okay.
It's a, it's an annual, you have to do it annually.
Zach, can you just tell them to move? It's a little noisy, the talking in the hall. If you could just, yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-municipal use permit for the town of Pittsburgh paddle and pour as presented for 2023.
2023. Okay. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Okay. Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, is Scott Harder on, on the line here?
He is.
We have Scott.
Unless I lost him at some point.
Unless we lost him at some point. I know. Okay. Next up are the bid results. We have these in the packet and they're posted. The first one is for Southwood and Sutherland Street Engineering. And Zach, thanks for staying and, you know, helping us with this as well. Scott, are you?
No, he's transitioning.
He's transitioning. Okay.
He's moving to one place to.
He's coming. Hopefully he's coming.
He's changing from his.
Zach, do you want to pull a chair up and just come up? It might be easier, you know, just so we can talk through it. Mr. Harder still segueing?
He's, I see him. I don't know if he's seeing the request.
Okay.
So Zach is sending him a quick.
Oh, a text. Okay.
To bring.
Okay. Switch over from Netflix and join the meeting. Yeah.
Can you see him?
I see him, but he didn't.
Now, is he?
No, I'll send up another promotion.
I have some wave.
I can't even see him. He's still in attendance. Not even the panelists. He's going to accept the panelists.
Maybe you want to call him?
Oh, wait, wait. He just left my screen.
We have movement.
He's coming in to be in the panelist. He's here.
Okay.
We have Scott.
Scott, hello? I'm in Rangoon.
There he is.
Hi, Scott.
Sorry, I got up for a minute. Stepped away and naturally I was out.
Okay. Well, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us. We're, we're looking at the Southwood and Sutherland Street bid results. And if you'd like to kind of weigh in on things.
How many?
For South and Wood, not to jump in, we only received one bid.
This is it. Yeah. And the first time out, we didn't even receive anything. And then we added on Sutherland. I think you guys recall. Yeah. Okay. Scott, you want to kick this off or?
Yeah, we, we did hear back from one proposer and then Zach and I met with them last week, I believe it was. And we reviewed what they had proposed and indicated some other things that the village was interested in. They replied back to us today with a revised proposal that had a pretty large number associated with it. And so bonded back to that and said, you know, could you separate Sutherland from that? See if we, see what number we might arrive at if you were to do that. Haven't gotten a, a number back based on that request yet. I think, I think I can say that Zach and I felt that they were a good firm, that they were qualified. And that even when you look at the initial numbers, those are, those are pretty high numbers from what we're used to. But I think that's the way it is in today's market. If you retain a consultant like that, you're going to be looking at those kinds of numbers.
And we, do they have the revised numbers that were sent at the last?
Well, that's when I want to make sure. Scott, you did get that last email came in late.
I counted one in like 3:00 this afternoon.
4:16. There was one after 4:00 where she broke out South and Wood.
Okay. I don't think I have that one. Like I can search for it. Do you have it there to share with the board then?
Yeah. Do we have any extra copies for?
I think I passed.
Oh, you passed it out. Okay. You got, you folks have it. Okay. Was it? Because it kind of came in at the 11th hour.
Scott, it was addressed to you. You should have it. It was in response to your, you asking Caitlin to break down the numbers by the, the street project.
Yes, I see it here. It ended up in my spam folder somehow. So that's why I didn't see. Hang on just a second.
Soak it in for a minute.
Yeah. Have a moment. Yeah, this, you know, for the board, the request was made when we got the giant number. Could they break out Sutherland? Because remember, we added Sutherland on. Yeah. You know, so now we just asked them to break out Sutherland and just only look at South and Wood, you know, those two separately, just to see what, what the difference would be potentially.
Our next three road projects for the road schedule are South, which is, you know, it's been on the agenda for six years now. Sutherland, which is, you know, right behind it. And then Shane Place, our three largest roads that also require the most attention. And so to try to sweeten the pot to lure someone in to bid on it, we lumped Sutherland in with South and Wood Street. And their initial response was the proposal. Then we asked them to start defining a road by road project so we can have more accurate numbers to go off of for this year and then tying into next year with Sutherland if we're able to. So what you're seeing is a reflection of that. So South and Wood looking at about $860,000 total for them to come through, engineer it, inspect it, and put out the bid for the project and also the construction, basically the construction costs of that project.
And they have a 20% variance on that. Am I correct? Yeah.
Yes. Here we take so. And then Sutherland, you can see the numbers for that as well. That is a, a pretty high estimate as far as I'm concerned, given that I, I think they're assuming that we're going to be replacing all of the drainage structures in the road, which we may be able to line them per our term contract. We have a scan expert, sewer lining, which would lower that substantially, but it's still going to be quite expensive.
So Zach, does this mean, I mean, originally we put more into it because the first time we set the bid out, we didn't get any responses. So we thought, let's make it a bigger project to make it more attractive. Are they open to now taking Sutherland out of this? Is that an option? Or did you just ask them to split it up so that we have better numbers for planning purposes?
Asked them to split it up so we have better numbers to, to discuss and also hoping that we can push Sutherland off for next year. It would save us a lot of money if we were to do all of it at once because of mobilization costs that are associated with the construction of it. And any contractor that comes through and sees, you know, a mile and a half of the road to be milled and paved more or less without the other aspects to it versus just, you know, a half mile here and three quarters of a mile there.
So we'd still be having them do the whole thing, just splitting it up in two years?
Yes. Yeah.
Not removing Sutherland from it and then showing that out to bid later. Okay. All right. I wondered. Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
But for the board tonight, what you're looking at approving is GPI handling the engineering. The overall construction cost, we're not sure of. I mean, they gave us, I'm going to guess their estimate's pretty good. You're not approving that construction cost yet because that would still have to go out of the bid. And I'm hoping that a miracle will take place and all of the construction costs will drop by 50% in the world. But that's not realistic. I realize that. But tonight, the board's consideration is the engineering.
So we're looking at the $93,000. Is that correct?
I think it's a little bit more with the add-ins. Am I right?
Yes, I believe it was 135 total. There was a range there. My rate, Scott, between, was it 96 and 135?
Something like that. Yeah.
I don't have.
Find it on the sheet.
Because there was 23,000 of the add-ins in.
Okay. So like, give us, like, give us the numbers, please. Because I, we're not, some of us aren't, wait, here we go. Yeah, it is. Okay. If you're looking, if you're looking at the packet, it's page five of the packet. So is that at 92,000 there? Yeah. On the fee structure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the initial lump sum total was 93,000.
Yeah, that's what I was looking.
Yeah. Okay.
And then we had the add-ins that were in addition to the 23. What did I just do?
23,100.
Is that right, Scott?
Well, I'm looking at the email that came from Caitlin where she broke out South and Wood and she shows 120,000 for design, bid support and construction inspection. I, I'm, I'm not clear on where that other number is coming from. Is that coming from the proposal that they sent in?
Yeah. Their initial bid was 93,000.
Right.
The second box I received yesterday, I believe it was, were the additional optional service total of 23,100.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not 100% certain what the, what the number is, quite honestly.
Yeah. Now that we're looking.
It's two different numbers. It's completely separated, both road projects.
Yeah.
But yet, and I take this back, total lump sum, 175 to 195. That's what I'm seeing.
What page are you on? That's with the letter?
That's with the fee schedule from the additional.
What page? But can you give me the page number? It should be, it's not printed on that page. Oh, nevermind.
Because it's the, oh, page three.
Thank you.
I can't see anymore with my glasses.
Okay, so. I don't think it's that clear.
It's, if you go A, B, C, D, and it goes total lump sum.
Oh, you are page three of a different.
Yeah, it's the first one.
Let's get anyone confusing. I'm not, the page three I have doesn't have it. I'm sorry.
Here.
I don't know why I'm not finding it.
See first.
Yeah.
You see the total lump sum between one. I think that's the number we're looking at.
Total lump sum here, folks. See where we're going?
Couple hundred thousand.
That would be more in line with the breakout.
Yeah, for both.
For, for, for both.
Right.
South and Wood and.
Yeah.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, that's before we do anything else.
It's not in the budget.
No.
Well, that's, that was the discussion that we had, you know, quite a while back about when we do this, it would be using a ban.
Yeah.
You know, and that would, you know, that's our way forward to get capital in progress.
There is no way with the budget to budget this.
Okay.
Then we would have to figure out how much the ban.
We'd have to, so I think the action here, I'm just guessing, if the board is, if the board gives me the directive to reach out to Bernie Donigan on the banning, you can't do the road without the engineering, I would guess. I'm just, I'm reaching there. We need to know and to get idea of what banning that whole project would cost.
What's involved. Yeah.
What is involved. The other piece of this, which is going to come at the next meeting, which I know a couple of our members, I'm going to pretend you're interested. I know you are. It's the back entrance. We're going to be bringing that forward. The bad news on that is that did come in over budget as well.
More than double.
Yeah.
Way more than double.
Very sad. That is also going to be a ban. It has to be a ban because, again, taking 200, at least 200,000 from the village budget is not foreseeable. But we need to, again, do the repairs. So I'm going to be bringing those, that information. We've been trying to work with the construction company to see if we can get those numbers down so it's patable. So either way, to move forward with banning or bonding, whatever we end up doing for these projects, I need to talk to our ban, Bernie Donigan, who handles that, and our bond counsel. Because at the end of the day, it would be a legal matter.
Would be the way forward for us.
It would be so we can get the numbers and what your paybacks would be, what the total costs are doing. So with the, the blessing of the board for me to do that, I don't want to call them and incur a cost without the direction.
Sure. Sure. Yeah.
So I agree with enough that cash.
It'd be a lot on a charge card, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first one today almost, I, I had a seizure.
Yeah. I, I guess, and so it seems that some kind of a, a ban is, is likely a part of the future of getting these projects done. But I would like to, since we are very close to the end of this budget cycle and we're talking about varying levels of, of tax increases, it seems that based on the revenues that we have coming in, we may need more or less of a ban for the initial stages of the project. So I guess what I'm concerned about is that if we just tell the, the person to do the forecasting for how much the ban is going to cost, and then that changes based on the reserve funds that we end up with at the end of the budget cycle in a couple of, in about a month, that there would have to be rework to, to his.
I think we can get a set different numbers. I, I don't think it's that much work. I, I mean, I'm not going to go and say, just give me 750,000. I'm going to say, you know, give me this much, this much of variance of amounts. So we have all the information. I think that's the smartest way to go about it. I mean, do I hope we have a surplus and we can add to our fund balance this year? Absolutely. Is our fund balance doing better? Yes, it is. Do I think we should take a little bit, maybe? Do I want to take a lot? No. That's where we have the discussion on looking at our fund balance policy again. Some way, I think we, between all of it, we can rework it. And if you're comfortable, I mean, you're welcome to meet with me, with the bond and people to go over the numbers.
Do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm, since we're going to be adopting the budget in like a month here, right? What is the timeline for accepting this? Because I'm just thinking that we're, we're all going to have a different view of the overall finances once that budget is adopted. So I'm wondering if instead of, you know, does this expire if we don't respond to it in a couple of weeks? Or what would happen if we said, you know, we've all got our budget adopted, we want to do that and have a week to get together with our, our ban person and then tell you, you know, May 1st, if, if we're going to proceed with this and with what part?
I'm sure they'd be open to that. I, I'm afraid that if we drag our feet too long on this, being that they were the only firm to respond to it, that we might lose them. So Scott, back me up on this. The proposal does not state that there is a given timeframe that we have to respond by. And after our conversation the other day with them, I think they would be willing to, to hang on by gain guarantee for how long.
I think they understand this is a big number.
It's a big number for us.
To get, you know, things settled. So maybe we could ask for a, a date, let's call it June 30th or June 1st, and get them to commit to giving us that window.
The only reason why I would say that's kind of far out is to try to get a contractor in to have this done, this work started and hopefully completed before the season ends.
I see.
Yeah. Which is another problem.
But again, getting back to where we are with the tentative budget, you're right, you know, we're tweaking and tuning and where, you know, we're kind of, we're close. In terms of, I think where we're headed, I don't, the degree of variation that would happen, if I'm understanding, is not significant enough potentially.
To raise some more additional funds for the projects through the budget? Well, that's going to be a board decision if we look at that and look at where our fund balance is and where we want to take. Not looking at the numbers, I can't.
No, no, but I'm just thinking, what, what, you know, we need to get the information either way for a ban.
Correct.
We need, I mean, that's, that we, I think, do we all agree on that? Yeah.
Correct. It will take a little bit of time because that's a whole process.
Yeah.
First, we would get the numbers from the ban people, bring them to the board. They would say, you know what, this looks good. Then we had approached bond counsel, which isn't Jeff. Who would put that information into a document. You would put it out and then it's subject to 30 days. So it's going to take the time to get the financing all settled.
So we could start in on that piece of you, starting to gather that information, still be doing our work on the budget. And at least we're, we're kind of moving, at least informationally, some things along.
Right. I can't, what I can't tell you, the board right now is affordability. What I can tell you, our existing debt, we're down to a couple. After this year, we're down to two more payments, which is great. We only have 100,000 left on that outside of the refinancing. And we have, one of those trucks is coming up there shortly as well. So our debt levels are getting very low. So it's a good time. I also remind the board that this is good debt, even though I think it's doubled in costs easily. I also remind the board that this is good debt, even though I think it's doubled in costs easily, unnecessarily in my mind.
But it's for capital improvement, we're not saying that. I understand where you're going with that, but.
We need to know what the number is gonna be. How long can we bond this?
Well, then I would like the board to entertain, you know, giving you the direction to at least reach out to Donigan to start to, let's get, pull that information together. And Justin's right, we need to, you know, we're looking at our budget, you know, we're moving forward.
And we know where we are.
Just so you wanna work with me in the numbers to provide to Bernie Donigan, I'd be happy to sit with you and we can go over what we have in fund balance, what we can look at at the taxes and develop a plan. I mean, I wanna bring this reasonably to the board, so it's accomplishable, because we got a lot of work into this, and obviously, we need to do the road. There's no.
Right, or it's gonna get put off another year and it's already.
It's like six years.
Four, five times more expensive than when we were on it.
Yes, the problem, everything we're finding out is just, wow.
In the, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess, um, my concern here is that we have a, a quite fluid situation with the budget as we were forced to adoption. And I don't wanna waste money with imprecise direction to the person who's, who's researching loans. So, how much money are we looking to spend on consulting to get this process started?
I can give them a quick call and let you know. I, I don't, they, I'm honestly, working with them in the past, it's just really, they could give me a range of figures. I don't foresee that being an issue with them.
I mean, it's a lot of heavy lifting for them at this point.
Yeah, they're just punching in the numbers, what the ban amount would be.
So, we're talking about less than a thousand dollars to get preliminary information?
That I can't promise, because we haven't reached out to them in a while.
Yeah, it has been a while, actually.
I, I, you know, if you wanna give me a.
Why don't we cap it? Why don't, we can give a direction and cap it. You know, does that make sense up to?
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars to, to reach out, to obtain the information.
If for some reason there's gonna be more, I'll let the board know and I won't move forward.
Okay, and that's, that's with a, a range based on reasonable, uh, fund usage towards the project to get it started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay. So, so directed then. Do we need a motion?
Since you're candid, I would.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve an outreach to Bernie Donigan, uh, captain a maximum of $2,000 to provide us information on a ban based on reasonable usage of fund balances.
Is there a second please?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lakefield?
Aye.
Trustee Like it?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Thank you. And.
In the meantime, I will keep in contact with, um, with GPI and.
See if they can wait till May.
Sure they know we're moving in a direction.
Yeah, um, I think, you know, as long as, as they have the sense that we are going to, you know, ask their, their, their work for something, then yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up, we have the bid, um, on the evaluation planning and design of improvements for the arboretum, and then DPW land parcel. Okay.
Um, real quick, I'm sorry, we had a question from the poller.
Oh, sure.
For Sutherland Street, how would this road be coordinated with the removal of street trees in order for Mark IV to lay the new water lines for 75 Monroe?
That's, um, removal of street trees, I don't think is gonna happen.
It's with, it's on the other side of the tree, and it's on the.
They're gonna be doing directional boring, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're gonna be able to drill underground without having to remove the trees. Um, and that might be changed anyway. With them, we had a meeting with them today that, um, we let them know that the possibility of repaving Sutherland, um, in 2024, that, that might change their plans of being able to put the water main on the east side of the road rather than the west side of the road, which would run parallel to the curving. In some spots, it would be in the tree line, some spots it would be in the road, depending on where that falls. So, it might not even be necessary to be on the west side of the road, boring underneath the trees through there. So, but we're in discussions, yeah. Because honestly, we don't even know where we're at so, with repaving something yet. It's a long ways out, so we'll just explore different options.
Okay. Thanks, all right.
I'm good.
Okay, so now we're, we're on the second bid here. Scott, you still with us?
Still here.
Okay. Um, do you wanna, you know, start off on this, this particular bid that came in?
Um, yeah, we, as I, as I think the board knows, we solicited proposals for the, you know, the work on that project that involves the development of the land and, and addressing both uses, the arboretum and the DPW. We, we've developed a draft scope that the consultants replied to. Uh, I went through the, um, proposals that came in. Um, these two seem to be high numbers. The, the difference that I saw between, um, uh, the two proposals between Lobella and Fisher, the, the difference I thought was, um, Fisher proposed to take the project, um, to the boards and present it to the boards, but they didn't necessarily, um, present that they were going to get the associated approvals, uh, whereas Lobella indicated that they were. And the difference is, um, you know, roughly $30,000, I think, between the two proposals. Also, Fisher indicated that they wanted, um, to, uh, they wanted the village to do, to do the survey. It will be required in more detail for the topographic aspect of things, whereas Lobella, um, had included that in their proposals, I understand it. So, I think if you, if you look at the difference between the two and you, um, associate approximate costs, you probably would note that they come in about the same number, which would seem to be kind of a high number to me. But, but that's what we have.
Okay. Questions from the board? Yeah, Justin?
To, um, to recap, I, I think that the last time that we spoke about this at a public meeting, we were talking about deciding as a, a board where the, the boundary is between the two parcels and, and then, uh, kinda going from that point. So, I guess, um, I, I think that we made a lot of progress on that. I think that we have to circle back and finish those discussions.
Sort of brought back in totally, yeah.
Yeah, basically, what we had is that, um, you know, it, we have a, a map, a line where it makes sense that most of the land is accounted for in the arboretum. And I think that, um, I've gotta talk with Zach and, and, um, Scott and Jeff again and, and see where we stand. But I, I wouldn't, I don't think that we have this in the budget right now, and, and I think the discussion is going in a little bit of a different direction at this point.
Yes, I, I, I'm in agreement with that. I mean, you know, cause you guys have been doing some good work, really sorting through things. We just, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, we. I mean, I think, any other?
I, I would just say, I, I think, um, I think those proposals were kind of helpful in, in establishing a, a baseline. But besides that, I, I think they also say to me anyway, that the more we can do in-house and making it easy for the consultant to uh, jump on board of what the, the village is kind of drafted, I, I think that will reduce that number. I think right now, that's, it's not super clear to the consultants, uh, what, what they may need to do, and I think their fees reflect that.
I agree. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I mean, I think we're kind of all in agreement, you know, that we, we have a bit of a different path and it doesn't involve about $100,000. Okay, all righty, so, yes.
Question of procedure, Jeff, should they rescind the bid?
Yeah, how do, what would the, for next steps on this, you know?
Well, they haven't accepted.
Right, so we're going to.
Notify them.
Yeah.
Just. If I'm not accepted.
Yeah, okay, we'll work on, we'll work with that. Well, that'll be our action item, okay?
I, I think we should contact them and certainly thank them for, uh, the, the effort they put into responding to us. Both those proposals, I thought, were well done. They, they certainly spent some overhead on creating those for us, so.
Yeah.
I als- I also think we should inform them that they will certainly be contacted, um, you know, as we proceed to the next level, perhaps, after we reconcile some things in-house.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I, I think really that, that's a good way to go. So, that'll be the action item, all right?
Okay.
Okay, any, anything else on this particular item? Okay, next up, pedestrian safety on Monroe Avenue. And Danny had received that email from, um, one of our residents, yeah.
John Eno, the dump, 55.
55. Ben? Yeah, Ben Richards, yeah.
So, it's pretty clear what he's asking for, just, I said I'd bring it to the board and.
Have we asked him to, this is a, um, so those, for those of you following along at home, this is the dreaded intersection of Sutherland and Monroe that the previous administration for decades asked to fix our, all our plans have identified it as a, as a problem area. When the previous mayor and I sat down with DOT, when they came through with their original restriping, like we pointed out, and they were gonna make some adjustments to that, because it used to kind of just be a driveway where you could accidentally, if you were driving a car, um, go up over. So, they fixed it a little bit and improved it, but we underscored that that's still not enough. We've been asking for a light there, we've been asking for stop signs, whatever. And we are not granted that. And again, um, we underscored it with this new mayor, too, that we still have problems there. We put a crossing guard there, which does help the kids who are crossing, um, and it helps those of us who live there, cause, um, you know, that's when traffic is, is terrible. Um, still, nothing is being done there. Have we asked this, um, this resident to also reach out to DOT? I mean, we need to continue our advocacy there, but.
But it, it helps when we do get the residents involved and tend to perk up a little.
It's about $150,000, probably four, and now my, now my numbers are old.
It'll be higher.
Two or three years old at this point, but when we were initially asking for the rapid flashing beacon, beacon, which is what he asked for, they were about 150, and I'm sure they're now 250 at this point, we don't really know, but, um, so that wasn't, we weren't granted any additional enhancements as part of this pedestrian safety. You know, we did get lots of good things.
But not down there. I mean, you know, yeah, they didn't.
This, this is another thing that if the village decided to fund, um, that we can also propose to the DOT and with their approval, do ourselves.
Do it ourselves, yeah. I mean, that's what the town proposed for Sunset, where the, the 70-year-old gentleman was killed, um, and they were denied. They've been, I mean, they've had the onset aside and they're repeatedly denied. So, I don't know if we'd be given, that's a, a great question to ask DOT. Yeah. Um, they, although they've been super collaborative throughout this whole process, as we know with our, the median, the pedestrian refuge island, so we're probably in a, in a good place to ask again. Um, this is, it's a terrible intersection.
It's horrible. Uh, uh, we, I think we need to circle back, you know?
Yeah.
And it, and now, you know, it's warming up, they're gonna be coming back in, you know, let's, we'll reach out.
Are we talking about 75 Monroe?
No, we're talking about, um.
I know where that crosswalk is, what I'm wondering is, with the construction of 70, potential construction of 75 Monroe, that there would be an opportunity for them to revisit the traffic patterns as, as ingress, egress, out of there, and revisit that entire.
Let's throw that in, too.
Area, because it's gonna change the dynamic, be more pedestrians potentially, and they might wanna revisit.
It's a great point.
That's a good one. Let's, we'll throw that in, I love that.
I've been hesitant to put a light in because of the rail, really don't wanna back up, so there's all sorts of tricky stuff. A rapid flashing beacon, beacon, uh, might, you know, help, um, I mean, undoubtedly, it would help some. And it wouldn't back up traffic, uh, but it is very insensitive. And as we just said, we don't have the funds right now to handle it. Rolling it with, um, whatever happens next at 75 Monroe. And I, but weren't they doing some sort of median originally?
They're doing a median on the west side.
Yeah, they're still building it.
Coming into the village. And also, uh, Monroe Ave Bridge, I think is slated for decking in, uh, 2026. Yeah, so there, again, DOT's gonna be back here doing a bunch of work. We put together the plan maybe even and propose it to them.
Let's get in right up front.
So, we need to stay on that, as we pass the baton, stay on that. Um, because the squeaky wheel, that's what happened with our median. I mean, we, we kept asking.
We were, we were on relearning.
And we've done all weekend, we've got flags out there, we were paper, you know, a crossing guard that you can't have there all the time. We put the pedestrian sign out, which helps.
That gets mutilated as well.
Yeah, and, but it slows people down, so, anyway. But I think it would be good to have this, um, resident reach out to DOT and write a letter.
Yeah, no, honestly, I tell everybody, especially with potholes and, you know, RGD with their lights, you know? Other times, they get sick of hearing from me, so please, by all means, contact them and let them know. Be vigilant about it.
Exactly.
Bushy, or else they're not gonna listen.
Yes.
Public comment. Peggy Caravera, City One South Main. The Newtown Court Building on Monroe is another impact.
Oh, good one, thanks, Peg. That's good.
Actually, that's really good. I'm glad you brought that. I forgot about that.
Let's throw that in, too.
Yeah, we want to be able to collaborate with the town.
Make a case for traffic.
And maybe the town can really help us and give us more support, saying, there's gonna be so much additional traffic as well, so between the, of the two municipalities.
That's really great.
We can double team them. Yeah. Okay, that's a good one. Um, okay, so then, yeah, Justin, sure.
Just wanted to, uh, use this opportunity to say thank you to Trustee Stetser for, uh, being so well informed about pedestrian safety issues and being an advocate for active transportation for the years, turning your time of the board. Thank you very much. And, uh, is it okay if we call you at every meeting?
Absolutely.
Help us as a nice guy.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to help.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
She's a permanent liaison to Nice Stop.
I know, I know. You know, really, Billy, great work. Um, okay, but we have our action items and we'll circle back, and we're gonna, we have to circle back anyway with, uh, Josh.
Yeah, well, um, we're talking about that next.
Yeah, exactly. So, we're gonna, you know, it's all kind of wrapped in.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next up is the village parking code update, and big shout out of thanks to Zach and all kinds of inclement weather going out and measuring, and also to Jeff for going through street by street and block by block, trying to identify properly, uh, for, for the, you know, the updates. Because, uh, this was necessary. Um, again, it's part of the whole overall Nice Stop project, um, to address, you know, parking, with all the new striping and in the different areas, so. And Renee, yeah, we all, you were out, you were part of that?
I'm not nearly as much as you.
Yeah, well, he, he did the whole thing and I was at a.
Behind a, a screen.
Yeah, but wasn't it an ice storm or something? This was really something. So, um, anyways, do you wanna, do you wanna, you know, pick up on this and where we, where we are?
Uh, yeah, so we're just trying to sort out some of the discrepancies in the parking.
Yeah, Nice Stop started it, started it. We got through our code and said, we're coming, this is not understanding, correct me if I'm wrong. We're coming through, we're gonna resign, found some discrepancies in your code. Or, you know, if you want us to sign it, we're gonna sign it the right way, so change your code.
Yeah, so we're trying to beat them before they finish this project to, uh, get the policy sorted out, so, I'm sorry, la, la, la. So, the DOT will act replace all the signage for us. We're kind of under the gun to get it done at this point, cause they got about a month left to work, so they say.
So, they say.
But notably, they have told us, they, they're loosening some things that we saw, or thought were kind of set in stone. We thought we couldn't have parking on some of these arterials, and they're saying you can have parking, on three parking. So, this is great, and actually clarifying some of these areas where, even though they elongated some of those turning lanes, because that's their new standard, we can still keep our parking, for example, in front of Thirsty's and, and Hungry's.
And people are parking there, you're saying on East Side, yeah.
South Main Street, um, uh, towards, um, uh, Justin Street as well, on that side. So, it would, like, we're getting on-street parking in places that we didn't.
Yeah, and we're getting the spots in, in front of the old Bank of America building.
Yep.
And that's sort of that first step to us really probably eliminating that right turn lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's a huge step forward.
That was a big step. And, um, and I think what really, um, sort of brought them around is when they had it blocked off for so long, and they realized, you know, that, that, they kind of made their own case, you know, so.
I think we have an advocate from the engineering charge of the project for.
Yeah.
Blocking that right turn lane off completely.
So, one of the downsides to clarifying this and for them updo- updating some of the, the signs is that their new requirement, or maybe it's an old requirement, that no parking signs and maybe parking signs as well, have to be every 200 feet. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a lot of additional signage that we didn't have, a lot of additional, you know, noise in our. you know, noise in our view. So on some of these, we're talking, like, we've had the discussion about Monroe, for example, if we just opened up parking there the whole way, which we don't think people would naturally park in certain places, because everyone has long driveways and big, you know, it wouldn't be used as much as.
Extensively, yeah.
We, we could eliminate the sign pollution. So if we move this to public hearing, and we decide, and we have a discussion about loosening, like, if we decide on Monroe that after DOT reviews us, that we just are going to lift the restrictions entirely.
And so the sign would be, you, no parking from this point forward, you know?
If we decided to do that, that would be less restrictive, right? If we move this to public hearing, we have, as you suggested, DOT look this over in one time, once again, they come back and say, you know, you could lift it on both sides, and then you wouldn't have any signs. That would be less restrictive, right?
It's not an easy answer.
Okay.
Because I think. No, it's not an easy answer, because the existing no parking, right, is, I guess it would still be less restrictive.
Be less restrictive. We decide between now and the hearing date.
Right, well, okay, then we would be making what we did less restrictive than what we're doing right now.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Because I think that's one, one thing we keep going, well, at least, I go daily back and forth on that. When I look at right now, there are no signs on that already visually, you know, crowded place. And we asked our, you know, traffic engineers about this too. We just looked at, we don't think that people are going to line up, park.
People hold parker, they don't think it's safe.
Right.
You know, it's, it's self-selecting to, to the, I mean, I'm seeing this now down where I am.
Yeah.
On South Main, because of how they drew that. Essentially, it looks like a plumb line almost, you know? And, I mean, you're, you're down there too, and I'm noticing, all of a sudden, the staffs are like, we're not parking. We see that, because the center of striping has moved.
Except on Sundays.
Sunday, you know, I still haven't seen it too badly on Sundays though. I mean, I spoke with the churches there, and they said that they haven't received any complaints or, you know, anything about it, so.
I'm, I'm thinking of the two, two or three spots in front of chandeliers on Monroe that have always been open to people parking there, but nobody does park there.
Right. Yeah, it just doesn't feel.
It doesn't feel like a situation of parking.
Yeah.
Although it is posted.
So I, I don't know, I'm still on the fence there. I can be convinced to, so that we don't have signs every 200 feet.
Well, the problem is going to be, are they going to put the signs in before we approve the local law?
Okay.
They are bound by that law, so they absolutely would.
But it's not law yet.
The other option would be to wait until they're out of there, and we do it ourselves, and then we kind of have control, but not necessarily the enforcement.
Right, we just, I feel if we're going in circles again, these are the decisions we've been having. I really dislike having a thousand signs, and we know that allowing street parking comes traffic, and, yeah, and I don't think people are, so I don't.
Remember that, off the top of your head, what the linear feet is, I'll change it.
This is, I believe it was approximately 500 feet from parking permitted to, you know, parking permitted area.
So three signs.
Well, it would be the no parking signs that would have to be up. So it's about 2,500 feet, maybe to. Yeah. So 2,000 feet, you're talking ten signs between.
Yeah, that's a lot of signs.
North Main Streets.
Yeah. So, sort of, I don't know.
No parking from here to.
Yeah. I'm thinking that.
No, allowing parking, you mean?
Yeah, and then just having the one sign.
Yeah.
Saying from this point forward.
There's going to be a big danger of people parking there.
I don't, I, I.
The likelihood that they would park on both sides at the same time, which is why we delineated it the way we did.
Right.
I mean, we can play it by ear and see how it goes, and we start having issues with it, we start adding more signage.
Right. I mean, this is also about, we're not advertising, we're not getting out and painting it like some of the spots where we definitely want to encourage parking.
Right.
So it seems to make sense to do it. Delivery trucks already do it, you know?
Yeah.
Landscapers do it, like.
Yeah, it's sort of services that are just sort of temporary kind of.
Yeah, I don't know. That's the one thing that I, I'm still, I think we should consider.
I mean, I'm, I just can't stand the idea of.
You've been pushing, I used to.
No, I'm not already, because now I have to change everything I've done.
No, it's not that one area, just the one section, right? And you were trying to get up there. You were like, this is going to be a lot of signs. And you're like, well, we.
Well, I was doing that because I really didn't want to wreck the law, so.
Yeah. But other than the simplified, don't you just get to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm joking, whatever the word.
And I think the original.
That's what DOT recommends.
And certainly was, was North Main Street on the west side of the road, because there's no parking down through there. So a sign from the village line on the north end, going all the way up to, to Monroe.
For North Main, yeah, I think, North Main, I think.
Yeah, but that, see, that's, you're going to have the same signage problem.
Right. Right, that's where all the signs.
Well, I think we're worried about Monroe.
Yeah.
Both sides, because that's a long run after the permitted, you know, so both sides of Monroe.
Yeah, would you just say 12 signs?
Well, that's on the, that's on the north side, I'm talking about. On the south side, it's probably eight.
I've never taken notice to the signs that's already existing out there.
There isn't, I mean, there's, there's.
Small.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's, 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 that side is no parking from where Washington to.
Yeah, to Southern, right, is that what you're saying, or not, on Monroe? Yeah. No, and it's, right now, it's, I mean, it's deserved, the visual field is going to be cluttered.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be signage every, every 200 feet on both sides of that road, and it's going to be signage every 200 feet on the, on the west side, yeah, on the west side of the road.
Well, if you guys, however you guys decide.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll add signs where needed, or take them away, if DOT puts too many out.
And frankly, it hasn't been a huge issue.
Yeah.
Um, Monroe, you know, I mean, I think we're kind of, you know, a hammer looking for a nail at this point. So, you know, I say, let's go with.
DOT said, lift it.
Yes, DOT recommended that.
Just lift it and do your best.
That's, that's what I, I know, okay?
And what?
How do we want to do this? We want to change.
Are we talking about North Main Street as well?
Well, that's what.
That's a lot of.
I thought we were talking about North Main Street, but on the west side. The east side, we got pretty well.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Straightened out.
Yeah.
But.
No, who parks, no one parks on the west side.
There's no way to.
There is no way.
There were, and we don't, we don't have designated spots that are painted with what.
We will just appear by American, but that will be defined by the signage.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't need signage.
For the two spots, we're designating two spots.
We're designating two spots, but if you take, if you don't put no parking anywhere, then, then if, if you decide not to make the west side of North Main a no parking area, then you can just stripe those two spots. You don't have to add any signage.
That's where we're going.
Well, I'm going to slit my wrist.
I didn't, so you had, you said, review this all again, and as I was like, digging through the conversations, and then looking at Google Maps, going, every 200 feet, that's a crap ton of signs, which you did mention several times.
So I'm, I'm still confused whether this is going to be submitted to the state or not.
Well, it can't.
But not, I'm, I'm sorry, not the state, the DOT.
What do you say, what are you going to say?
Well, you guys, the first thing we have to do is decide if you want to amend your legal notice.
Right.
Local law.
We all have a legal notice.
I, I said the wrong thing. Local, you want to put it to the local law, with the suggested changes from Trustee Studsir, the mayor, and Zach, and the attorney slit in his wrist, set that public hearing with the amendment, and then Jeff can change the local law, and then you can send it to DOT for review.
By that time, the DOT might be cleared out of here.
Well, that, I'm assuming it's a word doc, and he can cut and paste.
But for them to do any signage changes.
Well, let's, let's go for it. Let's just go for it, because we know what we want.
We want less signs.
Yes, we want less signage. We don't want to have that visual sign pollution throughout our village.
Too many signs.
And, and we open it up, we'll see where people naturally park, and we can, like, I don't think your measurements were for not, because I think, I think we're going to do that as we identify problems.
We can start defining as we need to.
I don't know, that, I, I don't want to, I, I, this is why I didn't want to just email you and throw it in, because I think we need to publicly talk about this, the signs. Yeah.
Well, we're, we're all in agreement, we don't want the sign pollution.
Yeah.
Right.
And this is a good starting point for us, we can always amend it to.
If we see problems, people in certain, park in certain areas.
Okay, so that's the action item.
What we're talking about is amending the no parking code to have only no parking zones for a distance past Main Street on both sides of Monroe. So there's going to be no parking zones for X number of feet on Monroe Ave, I'm, see, on Monroe Ave, west of Main, on both sides. So there's no parking there.
Because of the fire department, yeah.
And then, what, and then there's.
And then nothing's designated.
The south side, there are still two parking spots.
And then the south side, there's still two parking spots, which will be timed. So it's going to be, okay, I got it. Everything else is going to be, so never mind, I got it.
We park where.
So it's free, free form. And then on North Main, on the west side, there's, it's, we're not doing anything.
Yeah.
Besides the two spots that will be defined on the ground.
On the ground, but.
Exactly.
Well, then you can park there.
But that doesn't need to be codified.
And then we leave, then we leave the east side of North Main, the way we've got.
Yes, because there are different restrictions.
Right, yeah.
And then State Street will be what we've got.
Yeah, State Street stays the same.
So, all right, just for my clarification on what we are going to be painting on, on North Main Street on the east side of the road, because we are looking at adding in parking north of the entrance into the dairy.
Yep.
Are we defining those spots? Or are we just going to?
We talked about just delineating from one end to another because of different car sizes. So you have a parameter.
North of.
So.
Between.
Currently, what it is, is a turning lane.
Right.
So the, the fog line is right on the curb. We can't really defend.
We can't do it in front of Thirsties either.
Right, so outside of signage, there's nothing that really is going to show that there is parking.
So this is signage, then, you're right.
So we do none of some, and the signage.
Poor Jeff.
I know, sorry.
Oh my God, I thought this was.
Did we just change the south side of, or the east side?
You need a little hamster.
Not change.
What, the language that, that you wrote needs, trying to reflect that on the road, so.
Oh, that's your problem.
Yeah.
Great.
He's saying we can't paint because of the turn lane.
So we would have to have the signs.
But Jeff has what he needs to, to do the.
Yeah. Basically lifting the restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, where we had Zach.
And, and, you know, the.
Everywhere.
The upside of this is that we now have taken roughly 25 signs away from our streets.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing.
And someone could park, someone who lives on Monroe could park in front of their house if they need to, whether, have they drive, which right now they can't.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if needed, okay.
If needed, which.
Unrestricted.
Yes, yes, we're, we're, I think we've, you know, I think we're down the.
Someone could park their car for overnight and everything, sitting on that.
But we, we don't really have that on Monroe, anyone. Okay, you're going to park there just to do it, you just want to show people, don't you? Okay.
Are we sending out?
With the new job.
Okay, so are we, okay, hang on, let's, let's, I want to close this out. It's getting late. Okay, so, public hearing, we're going to start the public hearing?
Are you okay dealing with that?
You, you have to amend the local law and send it to me. So I guess, how long do you need to amend it?
I mean.
We can set it for, well, we, we couldn't send it any sooner than April 27th, because it's got to go, as you said, to, I don't count. If you need time to amend it, we could just say May 11th, and.
Right, let's do that, because we got to, I got to do it, and then you have to give it, you have to give the new stuff to the county.
Right, so that gives us time for you to get it amended and give it to me in timely manner, so I can have it 30 days to.
And Josh said it doesn't need to be codified, it just, it just needs to know.
They need to review it.
It needs to be cleared up.
Yeah, 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 what we're doing, what our intentions are. So having put it in, into hearing will be enough, and you just need to.
Yeah, that, that, that was the understanding.
All right, so are, are we still going to be submitting that to the DOT then?
Yes.
Have you submitted?
So if we submit it to the DOT, we have to do it on the recommendation not to add any signs, because they will be bound by law to do so. Am I, am I?
Stop. He's going to update it with the changes you guys made. Can you edit, give it to the DOT after Jeff makes the changes?
That's what.
I don't give him this copy.
Yes.
We're not giving, no. The, the action that we just took is that our attorney is making the amendments, so the signs are reduced. Once he completes that, we will be giving that to the DOT. So my request would be, can you just give Josh a heads up and say, it's, it's coming?
It's, it's being amended. It's most likely going to get to you after you guys have.
We don't need to, we don't need to make those assumptions, okay? We're working as quickly and as diligently as we can, and we are going to turn it around as quickly as we can and get it to Nice Stop.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Get the amended copy from Jeff.
Apologies for like, one of my last actions, throwing this whole thing into chaos, but I just, I don't want to, I think it's a good decision not to have a thousand signs out on the.
I think it's great, really. And, and, and again, we can amend it as you did. Okay, so.
Consider your apology, I'll let you know.
We're at the, we're a little more than two hours. Are we, do you want to just push through, or are we going to take a break like the boss? What are we going to do?
We're, we're pretty close.
Okay.
Pretty close. Thanks for bringing it up, but we'll, we'll keep it moving here. Okay, so we have to have a motion.
Yes, to start the public hearing from May 11th at 7:00 P.M.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're moving.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Studsir.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next exciting item is the Railroad Safety Act of 2023. This has been in the news, and the town, what you have in your packet and what's been posted, is a letter that the town has put together to send to, you know, our elected officials at the state and also at the federal level. And I, I, we've all had a chance to read it. I mean, if this is really about concerns about what's in the railroad cars, what, you know, all of that, being informed, informing our communities. My recommendation and my thought is that we should grab this letter and sign on as well. I think it's, I think it's important, you know, given, given things that are going on. And we've also had residents And we've also had residents express concerns as well and I think we're all feeling that, feeling that way too, so. And I can even remember years ago when there were oil cars coming through and there were concerns from the back in oil fields. They're no longer coming through, but.
There's plenty of stuff.
Yeah, who knows, you know, so this, this I think is good and I think we should all sign on, so. Any thoughts from the board, should we?
Sign up the same letters.
Well, yeah, we can use it as a template and then, you know, we'll all sign it.
Put it into ChatGPT and then put it in.
I see, I hear TikTok going forward, just have it write and everything for us.
Yeah, really.
Sure.
Okay, we need a.
Motion to direct the.
Yeah, motion, something.
Oh, it's so moved.
Okay, that's good, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, Copper Beach Park, public input follow-up. Yeah, last night, you know, we had the, a little forum and there's a video of it. It's, you know, it's been posted, you know, the town's done forums. So I know you, Justin, wanted to have a follow-up on that, so if you want to just.
Sure, yeah, I appreciated the the forum last night and I've been thinking about this and I guess my, I I love the idea of the park and I think the concept is great as well. And what I'm thinking about is making sure that our residents are heard, of the village, of our various appointed boards and that we're communicating clearly with the town. You know, I I keep coming back to the fact that the, having a village government is is important precisely because it allows our residents to be heard. And my concern with some of these great initiatives and investments from the town is that, while they are great, they have chosen, as we found out last night, not to apply to the village and not to go through the the village board processes. And my concern is that that may not allow some people to be heard. So my proposal here, based on some reading and based on discussions with our our council, I don't know if he agrees on on all parts of this, I think there's a board decision about how we proceed. But one of the things that we've done in the past is to look at these decisions and apply a balancing test of nine factors to decide if we should subject the project to our zoning authority.
We did that also last fall with the pavilion, you know, you may recall, you know, at the Stegall Center.
Yeah, and it seems like, you know, legally, that's the right way to go about things, it's it's clean. One thing that I that I did find in a document that is similar to the one provided by our attorney is that they say this should really be done in a public hearing. I guess there is some subsequent case law that I wasn't able to find it from the citation, but it said that those factors should be considered in a a public hearing. This is another article that I I came across and it has some useful information on on this case where the government, the town has limited immunity, I guess, and we would be looking at the the nine different factors. So my my proposal is that we schedule a public hearing to consider these nine factors at the next development meeting and discuss today.
Are you making a motion?
That was a proposal, are you turning it into a motion?
I will turn it into a motion, we we want to get out of here soon, right? Let's get right to the point, I make a motion that we, Dorothy, what would the date be of the public hearing?
And I second that.
We'll second it just so you know, so we can have, yeah, we're cruising now.
This one, I don't, this one you have to go to the county in public notice, I would say April 13th.
Make a motion that we set a public hearing to consider the nine factors on April 13th.
I would second that point of discussion.
Sure.
In addition, as we know, anticipating changes to the building on Monroe Avenue, I think this is setting an important precedent because we have a situation in that, in that, on that plot of land where the town is looking to expand parking potentially because of the use of that building and I don't think that the village would want to end up with parking in the front lawn of that.
Yeah, no kidding.
And so I think that at that time, we might want to consider having it go through the board process. If we stick to our process, then we have our legs to stand on regarding this consistency of how we deal.
Thanks, thanks for putting that on the record, thank you.
Which building are you talking about, it on Monroe, where Irish grays?
Rick Leacher's building, that's.
Yellow thing with the tall.
Real estate building.
Okay, got it.
You know, the pillars.
Right across from the, yes.
It's sort of like Tara, but not.
I I think if if we do this process well, it it really benefits not only the village, but also the town in ensuring that our communication is clear. So I always hope that when we schedule a public hearing, we would send notice to the appointed boards. We normally have jurisdiction over these issues in in our village government, the each PV and the planning and zoning board and also to the town as well.
Great, okay, so any any further discussion because we have a motion and a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And this will be very quick, we we wanted to have that executive.
Can we pay the bills first?
Oh, the bill pay.
Do we have an executive session?
It's real quick, though. Dan, we're dragging this out just for you.
It's, it's, it's icing on the retirement cake.
By a level.
Okay, sorry, I forgot bill pay, you're right.
You can all fuck up.
Oh, that went on the record, okay then.
Don't be limited.
And we didn't answer.
Okay, we have bill pay, first up, first up. Susan, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, bill pay.
Heat in the voted?
Pardon me?
Heat, is it cold in here?
No, I didn't cover the heat so we could do the road project.
Yeah, we'll put a big sign up, wear your sweaters, you know, when you come in. All right, thanks. Okay, so what's first up here?
The only thing I want to add to this is Brandon HSA funding for April since we're doing it on a monthly basis and Zed has come to me and he needs to have the rest of his HSA funding contributed to the issue. So along with the bill pay.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a second from Renee, roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And I don't have anything to add tonight, I think I've spoken enough.
I don't make a motion, that we approved the bill pay?
I think we just did.
Did we do it?
Yeah.
You just added in the HSA and then. I thought I was just doing the HSA thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we can do that separate.
We can amend it?
You're good.
I thought it was the whole enchilada.
I did too.
Yeah, we thought.
Because I wasn't gonna second just that.
I think we were just anxious.
Yeah, you think so?
Okay, and this really will be quick, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call.
You have to give a reason.
Oh, oh, for for the purpose of discussing employee, employee performance?
Okay, did you want to, I'm starting to bring this up, did you want to see if there's any public comment?
Oh, sure.
Because we do have four people hanging.
Oh, okay, oh, wow, they're hardcore tonight, yeah. Okay.
Going once, going twice. I say we're good.
Okay, thanks, thanks for checking, thanks for that reminder. Okay, so roll call, please.
And we have a motion.
Yeah, there was a motion.